All right, is everybody else good?
Yes.
All right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. We can do attendance.
Supervisor Holridge?
Uh, here.
Councilmember Arthur Sanna?
Here.
Councilmember Becker?
Here.
Councilmember Portman?
Here.
Councilmember Dicinger?
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
First thing on the agenda is the building moratorium. Now Liz is gonna do a lot of the leading here, so, with a lot of the agenda items, but the biggest, I guess, the biggest things that we need to take a look at are the comments from the planning board, right Liz? And the, what I would like to explore, which is adding warehouses to the moratorium.
Yep.
So Liz, if you wanna take it from there?
Sure, um, I circulated a couple of weeks ago, or at least I hope I circulated, if not, I'll recirculate, a memo on the existing local law, which we had a public hearing at our last meeting. We've taken care of some of our comments with respect to the seeker, the type one versus type two. But, um, there are a couple amendments, some of these are not news to anybody. Right now, it reads as if the comprehensive plan has already been adopted, it has not. So we're recommending changing that to, to reflect that we're in a comprehensive planning status. Where I need guidance from the town board is, and this may, you know, be a question for the comprehensive plan committee, right now, your moratorium as crafted is only limited to developments of five or more units. Is there, does the board wish to be broader than that, affect warehousing, commercial, anything like, anything like that? Because right now, it's very narrow to just the residential. So that's one question for you guys. A little bit of timing, I, it does have an extension period, it's a little short. I would recommend adding, extending the time to really allow your comprehensive plan committee to get their work done.
It's six months right now, right?
It's six, and you can-
With extensions possible, but we could do a year with extensions instead.
Or give yourself more extensions. You gotta walk with any moratorium, it's a, it's a very fine line. You know, if your comprehensive plan is, committee is actively going and they're, you know, meeting and they're being productive and, and the project is moving forward, usually courts don't poo-poo that. But if we get to year two, three, and you're like, okay, we're gonna extend again, and we're gonna extend again, that's when people start, the courts start looking at you a little sideways.
So, um, Councilman Courtney and I have been at the meetings, um, once a while. I mean, we, we are active, they are, they are making progress. I don't believe it's, I don't believe it's too little progress where we're gonna be talking about two or three years of a process. I don't think it's too much progress where we're, where we're talking it's gonna be done in six months. I think we're kinda on track, we started in December, um, you know, November, December. I would say, you know, six months with, you know, how many, how many extensions do we have right now? I think it was one or two.
One, I would make two.
I, I would say either we do a year moratorium with two extensions, or, or one extension, or a six-month moratorium with either two or three extensions. Just to give us, what, what, what's, what's better?
Right.
With, with, with that, I think, legally and also-
And then the absolute worst is, you get through your extensions, you would adopt a second local law, but you just have to calendar that out because a local law takes your two months. You have to introduce it, and then your board meeting, so you can't just go, oh, this is exp- and I had that happen in a municipality where we had a, oops, we had a gap for a couple of weeks. Which isn't the end of the world in a low-key municipality, but in a place where you've got lots of development coming in, you wanna avoid the situation where the developers are, you know, standing at the building, the planning department with their applications in hand that day.
Go with this, go with the six months and three extensions, gives you two years and hopefully-
Yeah, we can-
That's enough of a cushion, I don't think we're gonna even get that far.
If we don't get it done within two years, we shouldn't be doing it.
Okay, okay.
That's, that's, that's optimistic, but I like it. If we keep on the track, I can see us being done, hopefully by then.
Okay, and then the more important issue is, and this was highlighted in the woman that came to our last, the public hearing, in, in her letter from Whitman Ostromin, is there is no escape valve. There is no waiver provision, no escape valve. I think that's-
Right.
Dicey, dicey at best, and I would certainly include an escape valve where an applicant can, can come to this, to this board and present, and it's dollars and cents proof. Hey, I've been before the planning board for X number of years, we've invested, I don't know, half a million dollars, whatever that number may be, and there's, there's, and the, the escape valve has a, a standard to apply. You know, why would waiting, what's the dollars and cents burden to you, why waiting till the end of the comprehensive plan? And then the, the town board can take action, either granting a waiver and allowing that application to proceed, or not granting, not granting the waiver. That's also what, they have to exhaust that remedy before they can sue you on it. So they can't go to an Article 78 without exhausting that remedy. So I would recommend putting that in there, I have language to do that.
Okay, and before we, so did we decide on two or three extensions for the moratorium itself?
I would do the six months with the two.
With the two?
Yep.
Extensions.
So the biggest question that I need from you guys is, are we keeping the current residential only, or do you wish-
I would, I would like to, I would like to include warehouses. I think we have, according to the planning department, the planning board chairman, we have three or four that have already been approved, or basically close to being approved, that, that wouldn't get, you know, we, us putting in a moratorium, those would be exempted. You know, that's, that's a lot of building, and you know, the biggest, the hottest topic in Orange County is the expansion of all these warehouses, and it, you know, the, you know, taking up all, you know, open space, or, you know, more truck traffic and everything, I think the residents are not gonna be happy with the amount of warehouses that are already coming in, that we can do nothing about. And for, for us to be able to say, you know, we, we are, we are serious about preserving open space and the character of our community, and, yeah, the, having these warehouses come in might be a, might be a detriment to your quality of life here, but we are doing something to make sure that that does not happen. Or at least, if, if there're gonna be more houses in the future, they're gonna be done in a way that's not gonna be as disruptive as the ones that we are, that are exempted right now. I think that, I think that's a big thing, and I think the residents will appreciate us for it.
Do we, do we have other buildings in preliminary stages right now, or we just have the three that are almost final? So we haven't, do we have something that's coming up very soon?
I don't think anything is being-
Okay.
Built right now.
Okay, 'cause we don't wanna negatively impact business either, 'cause that's where, that's where our tax dollars come from.
That's what I said, that's what I'm saying, those, those three or four, they're gonna be exempt because they're, they're already too far along in the process, even though they haven't started building, they're still too far along.
Okay.
Whereas more, anything after that, you know, that-
Anything that comes before them now would be-
They would have to conform to whatever the comprehensive plan, you know, kinda does.
Comment I have on it is, I know we're, you know, we wish to, we're getting the planning catch-up right now, but the building department, we've had, you know, we've got a lot of issues with permits, I mean, how are we gonna work our way through that minutia? We have, we have one place that I believe, um, we didn't have a commitment, so we got a foundation of- So I mean, how are we gonna implement the moratorium with that kinda stuff going on?
I, I think-
Well, they've already got a building permit, so they've already been through the planning process. Yeah, but the building permit, once it's gone through the planning part, that's, that's, that's what, how this is being affected, in planning, not in building.
So, so I, and I can circulate this, uh, one of the municipality, another municipality I've worked for now, it was done under village law, but the same principles apply. There, we exempted pretty much, I took, we applied the moratorium to pretty much everything. But these were the exemptions. A building permit for construction of a single-family home on an improved and conforming lot, not requiring a variance from the zoning board of appeals. Issuance of building permits to a property that has received a site plan or special permit approval, provided however, said property is under development at the time of this law, and provided site plan or special permit has not lapsed. And then I have approval by the zoning board of appeals for an application for an area variance or interpretation. Issuance of a ministerial permit such as a building permit issued for the purpose of complying with the New York State Uniform Fire Prevention and Building Code, or to remedy a violation. That's people doing renovations, you know, small-scale additions, not anything crazy. Approval of lot line adjustments. Approval of an addition, alteration, or reconstruction of an existing structure, which results in no greater than a 10% change in square footage of such structure, and which is not intended to alter the legal use, or accommodate a different, different use. So it, and that's more particular, more for commercial, that, you know, they're not changing, making a significant change to the use. And then this is to catch people who are most of the way through. Approval of a land use application that has been issued a negative declaration pursuant to the state, i.e., they've gone through seeker, and they're in the final stages of an exit, of an approval process. So that's what we did. That's what we did in another municipality. You can make this as broad or as narrowly crafted as you want. I would say, however, though, just be consistent with, you know, across, you know, you can't exempt this commercial, but not that commercial. So you gotta, you gotta kinda be, be, paint everybody with the same brush. So that's really the, the guidance I need, is how broad are we making it? Or am I doing a moratorium for everything, or are there specific uses that are a concern?
So I know when I say warehouses, that's, you know, that's like the layman term. What would it be, how would it sound legally spelled out in the moratorium? Would it literally say warehouses, or would it say-
It's gonna cover everything.
It, it could be, it, it depend, again, it depends on how broad you wanna go. Warehouses are typically listed as industrial, sometimes they're listed as, as higher level, higher level commercial. I would match your code, so I'd go through your existing zoning code and match that to your code. But again, if, if you're concerned about certain types of development coming in, sometimes it's better to do the broader thing, because you might say, okay, this isn't an issue, and the day after you vote on the local law, and send it to the Secretary of State, something pops on your desk and you're like, ooh, we didn't want that. You know, that's hard, that's hard to tell, um, what's coming down the pipe.
So the only question I would have, the, the main, the biggest building, I think, that's, has aged here in the town of Chester is gonna be a CNS warehouse, which is partially in the village, partially in the town. It's a come before the planning board for some type of rehabilitation to that building?
That would be okay, they would be, if, if, if it's within the same footprint, and it's, if it's an existing building with an existing use, they would be permitted to-
But it wouldn't allow expansion of, of that business?
Correct, or altering the use.
Okay.
They could do a diminut, you know, hey, we're gonna add, we're gonna add, um, 10%, and I can, I can change that as well.
To broaden it up to 15 or 20%? I, I just don't wanna restrict, if we have businesses in the town right now that are looking to expand and, and improve their business, I don't wanna restrict them either, 'cause they're already pre-existing. So that number maybe should be increased a little bit to accommodate something like that.
Right, I mean, 10% on a 50,000 square foot warehouse is, is 5,000 square feet, that's a big addition, you know? So you have to-
Weigh it out.
You have to weigh it out. You know, somebody, you know, somebody putting in a, you know, another loading bay, probably not a big deal.
Yeah, okay.
So, I just need guidance, how, how the board wants to proceed on that.
I, I, I think that, so when you say broader, do you mean like all, all-
All building.
All building?
So in this case, um, this moratorium, uh, which was one, for one of my villages, was for pretty much everything other than a single-family house on an existing lot.
But what we have spelled out now, I think, is any subdivision of three or less, correct?
Five, so you've got somebody that comes in with, you know-
So five, five or less right now.
So five, somebody could come in and build four without any, without any issue. That's a business decision for the board.
Okay, so that's kind of a broader-
What is, what does everybody think here? Do we, do we wanna go that broad, or do we just wanna tackle the, the five?
The five family expansions or less? My thought process would be to leave it the way it is, but expand it to the commercial and all those. We really, we don't wanna completely stop any building in the town of Chester. We still want growth, so anything five or less is still something, go before the planning board, they're still active.
Four or less, because we wanna step five.
Four or less.
Four or less.
Four or less, yeah.
I don't have a problem with that.
So, so, current, but add commercial.
Yes.
That would cover warehouses.
That would cover warehouses. I will, I will match it to your code.
Right, whatever the language is.
I'll circulate a draft, and I, I'm not gonna have it. I, I'm gonna do my best, but for the 14th, I've cut, you guys have given me a lot of local laws, but more likely the 28th. Probably, I'm gonna try to get it to you beforehand, so you guys can mark it up, look it up. I promised Don Cerrova and Dave Donovan that I'd give him a courtesy copy beforehand, informally, so they could take a quick look, look. I would still, um, and then that way too, I can address, I have the planning board comments, and that was more of a procedural, how do we process, as we can address those comments? And then I would, in theory, if everything goes my way, I'd have it to you behind the scenes on the 14th, last-minute comments, and then, um, we'd have it, we'd be scheduling the, the follow-up public hearing on the, or meeting on the 28th.
Okay, are you guys good with that? Yeah, Tony? Sure. No.
I, I just, you want me to put, I can, I can moratorium anything, I just need to know what you guys want.
But we're not-
We, we could do solar farms in effect of something that is not already been through the planning board.
Right.
So that the planning board and comprehensive plan can, 'cause the Goshen did that recently, they put a moratorium on
The solar farm.
The solar farms, that they could put, look at the, what they had on the books-
Yep.
And strengthen what they had, 'cause again, we have Larry Dyson, that's not here, and his thought is, we should be, we should consider solar farms, because we don't want them everywhere in the town of Chester. We, we want them hidden, which they're supposed to be in, in certain cases, they're not hidden. They're in plain view and sight, so maybe we should strengthen.
So-
It's not gonna stop what we have in place.
Different municipalities handle it differently, sometimes solar is handled within your zoning code, sometimes there's a separate solar chapter, subject to site plan, site citing. It is not uncommon, because solar, and the other one that comes up a lot is-
Cellular.
No, not cellular, cellular is a whole nother animal, because it's, that's a federal. But, um, you've heard a lot, probably Warwick just had a fire recently, the battery storage systems.
Yep.
Goshen had a moratorium on that, because it's kinda like our next gold rush. We had the fracking rush where everybody came through. Now the energy, battery energy, where they're going to landowners and saying, hey, I wanna put this facility on, I'll rent your land, isn't this great? Here's some money, and so that's, it's not a huge gold rush, but it is kinda like that.
We have, I don't think we have anything on the books.
So Goshen put a moratorium, other places have put moratoriums, and so that, simply so that they could get a code in place. I can include this in this, or you can do one separately, if that's of interest to you as well. Those, because they're unique, it's not uncommon for the moratoriums, just on solar, battery.
So that's something we can consider beyond this then, okay, I'm good with that.
Doesn't that fall under the commercial category though?
I'd have to double-check yours, I, I haven't done a deep dive into your zoning. It, it could. Sometimes, the biggest issue with the battery energy stuff is, a lot of municipalities just have relatively bare-bones utilities regulations, and they don't have the specific regulations as to the battery energy, so they get processed under the bare-bones utilities, uh, regulations, and we don't have that, those provisions in place. So, um, I can look at your zoning and craft it, and I'll, you know, circulate that, hopefully by next week.
I just, I just got, go ahead.
I'm also referring to the solar, isn't that considered commercial?
It, it can be, it depends on how your code defines it, let me-
John, question for you. As far as buildings go in the percentage of building expansion on existing buildings, what would be your thought on, you know, a percentage of building increase? Any thoughts on that? Okay. Your reason, okay. 'Cause really, the, most of the industrial here is in the village, it's not in the town. Like CNS is the only building that's in the town. Other than, you have the other big buildings of Coach USA, and-
Yeah, that's, that has to go in, it's not there.
Okay, sounds good, thank you for your input.
Solar energy does have a separate provision under your code, it was added in 2017. So, um, I can include that in the moratorium if you wish.
Is everybody else okay with that?
I'm good with that.
Okay.
We can take a little bit closer look at that also.
Include, so just, just to summarize, I'm including residential over five units, five or more. Five plus, I'm including commercial, and I'm including solar.
All right.
Yes.
Uh, I'm not going to include, just, typically, you would not include, like, Joe Schmo wants to add solar panels to his roof.
No.
We're talking solar farms.
Yep.
Larger, larger scale, yeah, solar farms.
Yeah.
Not individual, yeah, not-
Most of them are gonna be looking at 10 to 20 acres for the moratorium.
Okay, I assumed, I just wanted to clarify, okay, thank you.
All right, uh, let's move on. Next on the agenda is disbanding the police department. Dan, what do you think about that? Next on the agenda is disbanding the police department. Dan, what do you think about that?
He's all for.
Early retirement. No, code enforcement, local law. So the, we have been very far behind in updating our local laws for building and code enforcement. I think Liz pointed that out to us like in the first week of.
So did John.
Yeah, so did John. So I, do we want to start with, Liz, do we want to start with you or I know John has some comments that he would like to make about this specifically?
I'll, I'll start and then I'm going to defer to John on a, on a bunch of this stuff.
Okay.
So the purpose of this local law is to implement in Chester the New York uniform building and fire codes that regulate, regulate construction. The state does have a model, model law. The reason I need to, I can't just handle a model law is because some of it is a choose your own adventure. I'm probably dating myself how old I am. So some of those I need direction on from both your consultants as well as the board. Whether we want to, some municipalities exempt certain things from building, you know, local building permits. They still have to comply with uniform code, but you don't need a building permit. Other things, operating permits for uses that deal with more hazardous materials, combustible materials, they would have an operating, would have an operating permit under, under this code. So your code hasn't been updated since 91, so we need to take a look at that. This also gives the building inspector, and if I use code enforcement officer, I'm referring to this in our, in this town, I'm going to, it's getting to be one and the same, but if I use those interchangeably, just bear with me, gives the code enforcement officer authority, things like stop work orders, things like, you know, things like that, remedies. And also if you implement it in such a way, there are two ways to do code enforcement in your, in your justice courts. I can either bring them to, or your special prosecutor can bring them to court under town of Chester code, or we can do it under the uniform code. You did this without a permit. If I do it under the uniform code, I can get slightly higher fines, $1,000 per day. And it's usually easier because the code is the code. It wasn't adapted by us. It's not us saying you have to do that. It's the state of New York saying you have to do that. And honestly, the uniform code is pretty consistent through a lot of the states, so most people. So.
Is that how most other municipalities do it?
If I, if I can write something under the uniform code, I write it under the uniform code.
The downside of that is, I think John.
Let's not do that then.
There are ways, trust me, there are ways to.
There's ways around that, even using the uniform code?
Without using it.
I can also plead both ways. There's multiple ways of doing it. So what John is talking about, hi, nice to meet you in person by the way, is to do a property maintenance code, update your property maintenance code, which will also address things. What the uniform code doesn't give you permission to do is things like, hey, Joe Schmo hasn't mowed his grass in three months and it's, you know, 12 inches high and you can see the rats and you can see the whatever, through, once there's been a due process, you know, your your staff can come to you and say, hey, this hasn't been mowed, there's a due process proportion and then you guys can go mow it and charge it against it. So we just need to make sure it's updated. But there's other things we can.
Yeah, I think that's something we have to look at as a local law in the future, in the very near future.
A couple of the big ticket items are, do we want any sort of exemptions? Is there anything that we don't, are so de minimis, we don't need building permits? I'm going to defer to the two Johns on that. Okay, that's issue one. I have a note in here with respects to time limits on, on building permits. I would include right to a reasonable extension so that somebody can renew. This one has, ends at 12 months. There's some projects that are just construction that's going to take more than 12 months and there should be a reasonable right of extension without them having to reapply for a whole new permit. This is another one. The law authorizes remote inspections, i.e., he's shaking his head. I, I just, I'm just asking the question. Okay.
So we were going to get rid of that.
Okay. So no, no.
No remote.
No remote.
Inspections.
Sorry, John, you can't do your job from your bed.
I've seen every, very little, I mean, sometimes something can be done with a photograph, but the, but not much. Yeah, I know. Okay, one of the big ticket items is unsafe building structures and equipment, which is in this code. There's two ways to do it. We can reference your existing chapter. I will say, we probably need to update your existing chapter to ensure due process, particularly when we're going in and condemning it. Or I can embed the unsafe building procedures in the, the code itself. Yours wasn't, your unsafe buildings wasn't awful. I'd still want to update it. So I can make reference for short-term, make reference here and then subsequently update your chapter 38.
Okay.
All right. And then John, you and I and probably John can talk on the updating the unsafe structures. Operating permits. I don't know if Chester has been issuing operating permits. I don't think they have. So just to give you an idea of what operating permits would be issued for, these are, these are fire permits. So manufacturing, storing, handling hazardous materials or quantities exceeding those listed in the fire code, combustible dust producing operations, flammable finishes, fruit and crop ripening, operating a fruit or crop ripening facility or conducting a fruit ripening process using ethanol, ethylene gas, excuse me, fumigation company, you know, fumigation. This does not include, you know, individuals that go to, you know, Lowe's and get their, you know, ant spray and go spray their houses. But this is like the companies that are storing it and operating permits for tents, special event structures or other membrane structures. So if the circus comes to town, they need an operating permit.
So that's something that the building inspector would inspect? There's a tent going up or something?
High pile combustible storage facilities. So that's racks and racks of, if it's more than 500 square feet.
How would this affect like we have, I'm not sure if it's through the planning board yet or still in the process, but it's, hasn't been back. They have a distillery planned in a residential area. How would any of these things affect that? Okay. So that would be a special permit for that use at that point?
Operating permit is just something that causes us to go in there on more frequent.
Kind of like your fire inspections and we would, and we would have to. And we would, and we have to set those amounts or those amounts are already preset in the code? Set the limits?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so I went duration of operating permits. I, I tried to set, because I, the model law has, you know, max, essentially maximum, so I've gone, I've matched the maximum, 180 days for tents, special event structure, 60 days for alternate activities at a sugar house, 100, one year for, it's one year for most, most stuff. And then fees, I've tried to do by resolution so that you guys can update it more frequently than you don't need to go through a whole local law process. You, you set your fee schedule as you would any other fees.
That's another question I've now, for tents and things like that, some farms seem to put structures or buildings up that are more tent-like. Would they be exempt being agricultural district or would they? So that'd be a permit kind of, of a person that would install those, getting a permit from us? Okay. So it's not going to affect farms or anything like that? Okay.
So we are ready for, we have on books the public assemble permit, which is for the occupancy, but there could be tents with that, I've seen, so.
Yeah, it would be wrapped in together with that. It is to ensure that the fire safety in this place, the tent is proper, has a proper fire rating on it and everything.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next question, and this is more of a question for John. The model code provides as one of the alternatives, do we want to rely on inspections performed by other authorized entities? I have that highlighted.
How do you mean?
They could have an engineer or somebody.
Office of, well. I, I think it's, to be clear, because they're not going to do the inspections for us, right? But if somebody had, if for some reason the state was here and they did an inspection, are we going to make John go in and inspect after the state has inspected? Why, do I see that happening? I, John, I don't know. Okay, so I think that. So I would.
Well, do we want to clarify that if they chose to have?
That we, that you could rely on.
You could accept that if they chose to have a fire marshal come in rather than our building inspector and it's at their fee?
Yeah.
We could leave it. But we can leave that option open that they, they could do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, sure.
Sorry, we don't have a seat there for you, buddy. Everybody wants to hear you.
Okay.
Thank you, Jerry.
So yeah, the code provides, the model code provides that if he gets something from the, the state, he can rely on that state inspection and does not need to do his own individual inspection.
It's up to our discretion.
Yeah. Yeah, and there's, there's a whole criteria. He's satisfied that that the person performing is authorized to perform it, that he's satisfied that it covers all the elements of the inspection. And we have a true and complete copy of the report. Okay. I'm assuming we don't, do we have any parking garages in the town of Chester?
No.
Okay, so I'm going to take out the condition. You can tell when they update model laws, remember when outside of Pace University in the city, the garage collapsed? This was right after that happened, so they, they added a whole bunch of stuff. So I'm going to take that out because we don't have it, unless you see a reason to have.
We can attach something like that in planning board approval.
Yeah.
So we can handle it individually.
At the odds of you having that kind of parking garage that would trigger that. There's a whole slew of record keeping. I have not touched that. That's all pretty standard. He has to report to you regularly what he's up to. Okay. How, how to handle violations, order remedy, that's all, that's all baked in there. And then I have matched, unless you tell me otherwise, I have matched the the state fines for, if I were to do it under the uniform code, I'd bake that in, so, $1,000 per day. And there's both criminal and civil penalties. And I think that's it. So I think I just need direction on if anything needs to be exempt.
So the only other thing that I would like to look at is with the operating permits. If I feel that something needs, is not falling under one of those categories, but I feel I should have an operating permit. It says in here that it had to be done by the, resolution by the town board instead of at my discretion.
Okay.
So I don't know if that's something you guys would feel comfortable letting me decide that rather than have to come to you. So like a distillery, if they didn't fall under any of these specific things, which they probably would, but for an example, then that would require them to obtain the operating permit without having to come to you guys at hold meeting, public hearing on it all.
Okay.
Very few things would ever fall under that. One example I did was, it wasn't large enough for the assembly area, but it was a children's play area. Just because there's children there, always required them to have that, so it was a more frequent inspection.
As long as that's still referenced through your reports and stuff to us, so we were aware of what took place.
And then that, that could be your reporting and reviewing planning board applications, so that would be baked into, I'm assuming, an approval resolution.
Yeah, some of them might slide through that they don't require that, but if not, it would be, it would be a letter sent to you guys notifying you that this would be happening. There's some issues, we can address it then.
Okay.
Are we good with that?
Okay. So I'm going to go make those changes. I'll circulate a final draft. If there's anything, let me know.
There's one other thing with the types of inspections in there.
Yeah.
Did not include sheetrock inspections. That's something that typically require.
Okay, I'll add that. I'll circulate it in Word, so if you need to make any changes, you can do so easily. Add sheetrock. Again, I'll try, this is largely drafted. I'll make those edits. I'll try to have that to you as soon as I can. So maybe introduction on the 14th.
I don't think it's like a.
But definitely the 20th.
Yeah. What else from you?
That's it.
That's it?
Thank you, John.
Thank you. What are the comments before you step down?
I have, Libby Quadros, I agree with that to me, warehouses close to residential areas of Sugarloaf. Warehouses should be in the center block on Black Meadow. Robert Valentine, the distillery is not in a residential area, it's an LBS zone, local business.
Okay. Sounds good. All right, moving on. King's Highway weight limit, local law. Liz, you had questions about this, I'm guessing?
No, I just wanted to, I have drafted, I will cir, I just finished drafting it. I will circulate it for review and comment. A local law to limit the, the weight limit on King's Highway, essentially the Sugarloaf Hamlet, the corridor. We have to provide a, an outlet for, for trucks to go. Looking at the map, I, I said, starting at Bellville Road and then I did to Pine Hill Road. So if somebody came and turned up by the post office, they have an out, so I don't want to make it to King's.
How do you mean outlet? Because so the point, I mean, the, the idea behind this is to actually make them use the bypass for the reason.
Right, but if they're going north of Pine Hill, they have nowhere to go.
You mean if they're coming down this way? From Pine Hill, where, how you mean?
What if they're making deliveries also?
Yeah, if they're coming, if they're coming through here, so they would be able to come this way.
Yeah.
The truck route would be from here to there.
Right.
Would the truck probably, wait.
Right, this is exactly where, okay.
But this way, if somebody's here coming up to Pine Hill, they can.
Gotcha.
Come through.
And then they can get back to Route 94 or whatever. Okay.
That was my thought, that was my thought process.
That makes more sense, I didn't think about that.
Obviously, you'll, we'll circulate it.
And there's going to be exemption for local deliveries.
There has to be.
Yeah.
By state law.
Yeah. Okay.
And essentially, you have it in your code, it, it, it looks very bare bones, and it doesn't say anything about the exemption for local deliveries. Your code already had that, you have reserved in 1918, it weight limits, and then it says reserved. So I'm just filling in the blank, and then the rest of it is already in your code. So if there are other areas, I would circulate this to the police department for comments, you know, anybody else, so we have those comments on record if we move forward with the local law.
Okay.
So if you want, I, I can have a resolution, because it's drafted, I can have a resolution for the 14th, if that's something you're interested in, or we can schedule it out later.
No, I think earlier the better.
So is it, I'm sorry, it's a resolution or?
No, it's a lo, so.
It's going to be.
It's a local law, I will draft the resolution introducing the local law.
Right.
Okay.
All right, any, anything from that? Anything from the public on that? Michelle?
Okay.
I'll do my best to have that to you this week. I will try my darndest.
Sounds good. It's all we can ask for. Ethics reform, I think this one's pretty straightforward. I mean, it's about the procedure, who the complaint goes to, who, you know, it, right now it goes to us, and then we decide whether or not it goes to the ethics board. That's ridiculous. I want it straight to the ethics board. I think there needs to be some sort of written procedure in the code where, you know, that needs to be like some sort of sealed, because right now, there, it's not like the ethics board is stationed here. You know, they have a, they, they need, they'll need a mailbox or like a drop box where it's, you know, secure, and one of them, I guess their chairperson would have some sort of way to access that.
I don't, so.
How, how would we go about?
You would still go through the clerk's office.
I would, right now, and there's two different things to the ethics. My focus right now is on procedure, and then over time, we can look at the, you know, more substantive regulations and things like that.
Good.
I have designated the town clerk as, as the receiver of those. There is a confidentiality provision in there, that, that the complaint remains, remains confidential.
Concealed.
And, and, yeah, and essentially, the town clerk's role is, is purely.
Just a holder.
And then there is a shall, the town clerk shall, shall refer this to the ethics committee.
So they're compelled to do so.
Yeah, she's, she's compelled to, to give it. The always, the question becomes, you know, essentially, under that purview, the ethics committee is going to get every single solitary complaint, whether it's, you know, got merit or not.
It's up to them.
That's unfortunately the hard part of this is.
Now, do you want to set a procedure for them also where they can distribute this by, by email? Or is there, or is this just left wide open to the?
I have the ethics, I put that they could create.
So that they don't have to meet for every single time? This can go to the chairman, it'd be distributed by, via email confidential to the members of the.
I wouldn't necessarily get into that.
Okay.
That minutia of detail.
Right there.
The ethics board shall adopt and promulgate reasonable rules and regulations for the administration of its proceedings.
So they could set that.
The rules and regulations have to be made, and this, this isn't a change. Have to be made available to the town clerk, so she can distribute them to the public. If somebody said, what are the ethics board's rules? It's just like the planning board or the ZBA, they get to promulgate their own, you know, we're hearing the minutes first, we're, you know, whatever.
So is this board want to put those rules together rather than, or get comments from the, from the ethics board and then draft something from there? I don't want to put more work on them.
What I would.
I guess the only comment I have to, one question, is we have an ethics board attorney. So if you do have ethics complaints coming through, could we need him as the one, okay, this one is, this one doesn't have the merit? Or just because you don't have?
Well, the only.
He just gives us guidance.
I, I think it should be.
The only issue with that is you've hired Mr. Goldstein, or whoever is in that role, to, to give legal advice.
Yeah.
You're then putting him in the position of a decision maker, which then puts him part and parcel of the proceedings, rather than him being able to give legal advice to that, to that board.
Well, here's, here's an example of my concern with that. I'm all for the ethics reform, but, you know, we had our chairman, our former chairman out campaigning for a former supervisor. So I don't know how, and again, I'm not, I think that equally I'm on the ethics board are great people, but that's an example of that itself as an.
I think that's the point of a board instead of just one person. You have to, it's, it's the, it's the. The risk of, you know, of just having that, you know, you, you have a board that's supposed to keep each other in check. I mean, you would like, you would hope that there be people on the board to, you know, make sure there's no sort of conflict of interest.
Well, that, and that's, I guess that's my, my concern, and that's an example. So that's why my thought is, does it go to, you know, if it, if it doesn't seem feasible, then we, I guess upon us to make sure we have the right people.
I would, I would recommend that you can either, you're concerned about filtering the complaints, I would send them all to the ethics board and let the ethics board, and it may be, it may be a silly meeting, you know, where there's a silly complaint, and, but let the ethics board decide that it has no merits. Let them set their record, this has no merits because da, 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 and we're tossing it. And then you have the record of the ethics board.
They have a comment over there, prebranded.
I have a comment. Amir Sadakami, as an attorney who appeared before the ethics board representing a client, all complaints should go directly to the ethics board. The ethics board should not be using town employees for correspondence. They should be using their attorney's staff for communication.
And that's, that, that's fine.
Yes.
And there's no.
That's what we're talking about.
Yeah.
I mean, that could be done confidentially also, handed off to Linda for things to be mailed out or whatever possibly do.
The sole thing I have the town clerk doing is literally serving as the receptor of. Dear town clerk, here's a complaint, just like you would receive anything.
All communications will be with, within the board, within the ethics board, the only.
I'm in full, I'm in full agreement that this board should not say, yeah, you're right.
Yeah.
The other.
I think we're all in agreement right now.
The other authority that I would recommend you add for board members, whether it's this board, the planning board, the ZBA, or any staff, that they can request in writing to hear and issue an advisory opinion. Hey, I've had this, this opportunity, you know, I have a night gig that I, I, you know, was presented an opportunity. Is this a conflict of interest? Then the ethics board can issue an opinion letter, this is a conflict of interest because, or not. So your ethics board does not have authority to issue an advisory opinion.
I thought that's what they do.
Well, but in advance, so they wait till there's a problem.
Right.
You might say, hey, somebody might want to, you know.
Oh, oh, I see what you're saying.
If they're looking for a preemptive.
Yes.
Hey, is this going to cause a problem?
Yeah, I, yeah, that's a great idea.
You know?
Yeah.
My daughter is getting a job at such and such, is this going to be a problem? You know, my, my, my son-in-law, you know, just got offered this great job. Is this going to be a conflict of interest, or do I need to recuse myself or whatever? And then that way, you have the backing of the ethics board one way or the other, and maybe you recuse yourself. That way you can ask that permission, or that guidance in advance of the situation arising, rather than after.
Okay.
Now, just another question, Liz, I'm sorry. Is looking at our ethics, our town code, I guess, our laws on ethics, I believe we have to probably kind of blow the dust off them and take a look at them, because an example being if you have, if you, if you violate an ethics violation, there's no, there's no re, there's no recourse. If I did this, this is what's supposed to happen.
So that's.
That's more.
Part, well, part of the issue is, who, who implements, okay, somebody's done something bad. Somebody has committed an ethics violation, they're in violation of the code. The, the ethics board has held their hearing, unanimous vote, person did something awful. Who, who implements the penalty? And right now, your code is not clear on that. Effectively, right now, it comes back to the town board. Who, who implements the penalty? And it depends on this, a lot of this is fact-specific. Do we want to authorize our ethics board to implement the, implement a penalty? Now, sometimes the ethics board can't, so for example, the ethics violation may be part of a foundation of a 70, a civil service 75 hearing. And the ethics board can't participate, but their findings could be a basis for that Article 75 hearing. So we just have to kind of flush that out. So for the short term, I'm working on procedure, and again, the question is, you know, how much authority do we want to give the ethics board with respect to penalties? There are some penalties that the ethics board can implement. There are other penalties the ethics board won't be able to, doesn't have the legal authority. Do we involve the justice, you know, how, how far do we go? So those are, those are all, those are all discussions. Because we need to make sure, as part of any ethics, that there's appropriate due process. Because you can't just say, okay, that's a $250 fine. There has to be appropriate due process before you implement that, that penalty.
Yeah, I think it requires a little bit more discussion and research, but I completely agree that something needs to be on the books.
So I'll circulate, that's going to take me a little bit longer, but I will circulate a red line for you. I've copied and pasted the existing code, I'll, I'll circulate a red line with some comments and questions and thoughts and suggestions, and maybe targeting the February, the last meeting in February or the, this first meeting in March.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
So I am the receiver of the complaint. Do I receive a decision, a recommendation, any correspondence? That's going back and forth between the complainant and, and the ethics board, or the ethics board to the person?
We can, we can clarify that. I, I don't see you as the intermediary, I see you merely as the receptor, receiver.
Once they get their hands on, I'm done in that.
The, the only thing at the end is, if there is a formal decision, and it, and it, I'm going to call it an adjudication, that's probably not the right word, you would be filing the decision, just like you would be filing a planning board or, you know, you know, as a, you'd be receiving it as your town, as your role of town clerk, that starts your statute of limitations.
The only thing I see with that, with anything that the ethics board does as far as setting a public, you know, a public hearing, your hearing or whatever, in relationship to a violation, there has to be, you know, it's registered mail and stuff, so that's all falling back on the chairman of the board. So how do we?
Okay.
You know, if he has to send mails and stuff, you know, he's putting it out of his own pocket in some instances to send this out. How do we correct that?
Okay. I'm going to review, I'm going to review role of, so I'm just taking notes here. Role of town clerk. I, I want to keep your role as minimal, as minimal as possible.
I mean.
I want to overleave.
If we're looking at the attorney and the attorney's staff, I mean, I would think to draw correspondence, wouldn't they?
It would go straight from, I don't see any need.
Okay, so we could.
I don't see any need.
So we can do that, so the ethics board would basically be allowed to send correspondence through the attorney's office.
But public hearing, and again, ethics, you have to, there has to be, we have to balance that need for, because at some point, there's going to be a privacy, because the, the initial complaint is usually private until there's found that there's just, you know, there is probable cause that there is an issue. But public hearing procedure, so I'll look at all of that, and I'll try to get you guys a red line.
Michelle had another question over there.
Amir Sadakami, why does the town board have to put the town clerk in the process? Residents can send correspondence to other departments, shouldn't it go directly to the ethics board?
Well, I, I think the literal reason is because the town clerk has a secure office, whereas if, the only other way I would see the communication going directly to the ethics board would to be sending them an email, which could be not secure, or le, leaving a letter in our mailbox and our, our mailing room, which also is not secure. I feel like if it's a sealed envelope in the clerk's office, that is, that is the best, most secure way, in my opinion, unless, unless Amir or somebody else on this board has another idea, which I'm very much open to, that, that right there is the most secure way I, I see.
And I don't think the ethics board warrants the hiring of this, of a, so like the planning board, ZBA, we have a clerk who is in place to receive and process those applications. The ethics board does not have a, does not have a, a secretary, and.
I think the.
You know, I don't know that we want, I don't want ethics complaints being sent to your ethics attorney, because what if he's no longer, your ethics attorney?
Right.
You then have village records outside of village halls, all right, sorry, town halls, excuse me.
And, and the, the sealed part of that, I mean, sealed is the key word there. If it, if for whatever reason the letter is unsealed, then it's, it's on Linda. And then Linda gets in trouble, you know, like, but, you know, I, I think that's, I think that's the most secure way to do it.
But she could also put it in another envelope when it comes in.
Yeah, if somebody walks in and says, I have an ethics complaint, Linda will hand them an envelope and say, please put it in here, seal it, stamp the envelope received, and then she calls Gary and says, Gary, we have an ethics complaint. It's, it's available at town hall.
Sure.
Amir again, why would the town clerk be opening letters addressed to the town of Chester ethics board?
No.
They're not opening it, she's not opening it.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm saying would not happen, or, or there'd be consequences, yeah.
She is merely receiving sealed envelopes.
Right, right.
Okay. So I'll make those red lines for circulation and comment, and then we can, based on those comments, decide when we're going to.
That again is a setting procedure to be followed, and that way we have guidance.
Correct, but it takes the town board out of the ethics decision. Again, we have to chat more about the penalties, because there may be a point where the town board is in a position, but the initial findings, you're not making an initial finding at the outset of an ethics investigation.
Right.
You're letting your ethics board make that finding first.
All right, zombie polls?
So I have not drafted anything, but I have model, I have the model from Town of Walkeel with respects to zombie polls. If that's of interest to you, I am going to copy and paste and change Town of Walkeel to the Town of Chester and a couple of other little changes, and I can have that ready for you probably the 28th.
And I have some documents for you as well, so you can review and see if that should be something.
Okay. Any issues with that, guys?
No.
Okay. Target 228, I'm going to be a busy girl.
These deadlines, you know, I mean, some, I mean, we have to prioritize, because these, this is a lot of work. And, you know, we, we don't have to get everything done in the month of February. You know, this can be over time, but.
No, and you may want to meter out, and as a scheduling perspective. I have seen it done. Public hearings. You know, you may say, this is, we know this is going to be a controversial local law. I don't think anything, the ethics might have, have some comments, there shouldn't, but if you know you've got two big controversial hearings, you may not, you may not schedule them the same night, and that's a business decision.
I think the moratorium on the, the building is important, because we've already started a process of, so that's something important to get done.
Yep.
Thank you.
So I think of the priorities in my mind, unless you tell me otherwise, moratorium is, is top, followed by code enforcement, followed by ethics. Unfortunately, the two that are slightly lower priority are easier to draft, so those will be ready to go faster.
There we go.
So, you know, I, I don't know how fast you want to do the weight limit and the zombie stuff.
Okay, well, I'll talk to you about that.
Okay.
The next thing is the senior tax, let me just go get John, the tax assessor. I can go, I need to go. Is there any public comment?
No.
I'll be right there. John, hey, here's, here's a good copy for everybody. You can only make five copies. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll steal this.
So, I was asked to present this to you guys. Kathy at the county said that she had looked through our local law that was passed for the age 467 exemption. The income was not defined in it. She feels like it should have been. So, what I handed to you guys was the local law that Chester currently has. I gave you a sample from a neighboring town. And I gave you the state's definition of income and options that you have to adopt and or not adopt certain situations for social security, IRAs, to help determine our income for the aged.
Did everybody hear that?
Yep.
So, my thing is timing. I spoke to John about this earlier. This is going to be a local law change. We need to have a public hearing for that. Usually, there's two meetings in between when we set up the local law of public hearing. Are we able to get this done before the March 1 deadline? If we prioritize it over some of the other items we have on this agenda?
It would be really, it would, you'd have to schedule special meetings and everything would absolutely have to, is it doable? Theoretically, yes. But we'd want to introduce it before, we'd be effectively scheduling a special public hearing. Because I wouldn't have time, even if everything went our way. And somebody would be driving it to Albany.
Okay, so worst, worst case scenario, we can't get it done by March 1 deadline. We pass it just this year, we have to stick with the old system of doing it?
Yeah, so what I'm doing now is, what the state did, they dictated a way that it could be done. They've given options for the locales to do, you know, and then another way that they may want to do it. So, we've been implementing it the way the state has said to do it.
Okay.
And that we can continue to do it that way. If you do decide to change it, and if we can't get these public hearings and such, then we can implement that for next year.
But you, but our, from our conversation yesterday, the way that the state, we're choosing to implement it the way the state, like you just said, is doing it. But in your opinion, it could be a little unfair depending on the, on the, the income levels and everything.
Well, I mean, it's, I mean, it's not going to be unfair because it's going to be consistent across the board for everybody. I just feel if it was, you know, some seniors are just making it or not just ma, or not making it based on, you know, minusing the taxable IRA distributions or not. So, currently, what we're doing is we're minusing IRA taxable distributions, which helps bring down the income, which is a good thing.
Right.
Some of the stuff that we're looking at, if you're going to include, I, what is the other one? Social Security and the IRA distributions. I wasn't sure if it was including all of the IRA, like, I was, I spoke to Neil about this and I've gotten clarification since speaking to you. So, I think the way the state has it isn't bad.
Okay.
There is, as long as it's consistent, right?
Right.
And we went through some of the files that we, applications that we have for the seniors. And if we don't deduct the IRA distributions, a lot of the seniors are going to lose it. So, by deducting it, the people who are on that threshold that may really need, could use this exemption will be helped. So, I think the way the state has said to do it isn't a bad idea. But Kathy at the county, at the very least, says that the definition of income should be in our local law. That way, why are you doing it this way? Because the town implemented it this way and this is why we're doing it.
So, basically, it's formalities.
Basically.
Okay. And it's, it's not the end of the world if we don't get this.
Absolutely not.
There.
Right, and we can continue to do the way we're doing it, I think is fine. But again, it's just the, like you said, the formalities, getting the wording into the local law properly. Based on what she said, I gave you an example of a neighboring town who did it. They implemented different levels, which, you know, neither here nor there. You guys chose to do it the way you did it, and which is fine, which was the maximums. And that is very helpful for the residents of the town who could use it. So, I don't think there's a problem there. I just wanted to present it to you to maybe get it clarified.
I think, I think we put it on the list. If, if our tax assessor says it's not the end of the world, then, I mean, even if it was, and we might not still have the time anyway.
So, this was, our law was just for background for me. This was adopted last, this was last year and the purpose was to up the, up the amount.
Tax exemption.
Correct.
Okay.
But they just didn't find what they define, they didn't define income.
Income, right, right, right.
Right.
And I know the law, I know the law changed.
Right.
And every policy is going through this right now.
And I did include the state's
Yeah.
information.
We certainly can have this ready to go. We just have to remember so that we're not remembering in January that, you know, like, we start talking about this in, you know, November or whatever, that we should, we should add this on our list. Or we can do it in the middle of the summer, it's not a big deal.
It'll go on the Google sheet.
I don't want to even see the Google sheet.
No, you don't.
So, this is, this is not hard to accomplish. This is a de minimis amendment. It just takes the time to do it. So, you have your introductory meeting, your public hearing. And so, it's, it's at least a two-meeting process.
Okay, so it's, we're not going to, we're not going to rush it. We're not going to freak out about it if it's.
Just make it happen.
It'll get done this year, it just won't get done before March 1.
And we're just going to continue to do what we're doing.
Yes.
Thank you, John.
Okay.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, guys.
Is there anything from the public on that, Michelle, before John leaves? No? Thank you. This is, this is for the double, the double poll, zombie poll stuff.
Okay.
For your, read out your lead.
Yep.
All right. Controller and building inspector single bill. So, this is the creation of, you need to, we need to talk to Scupus about.
Oh, yes.
That's what, that's what I was talking about, I was talking about this.
Okay.
We need to, we need to get the positions, like, officially created with the state or whatever like that.
So, as a, as a belt and suspenders essentially to maintain status quo.
Right.
Technically, those positions.
Need to be residents.
Town residents.
Right.
They haven't been town residents, right? And it's hard, you're not a huge, you're not a huge town by any stretch of the imagination. And it is not uncommon. And so, if you look at town law 23, there's a whole slew of lists, town such and such. So, Town of Walkeel has a, the controller, the, the building inspector and a couple of other positions can be non, can be non-residents, so long as they qualify in every other, in every other respect. I would recommend you just ask either of your, you know, your legislative representatives to initiate that legislation. I don't see any controversy. It should be relatively simple. You don't have it, if you, so right now, you don't have a town attorney. You're, you have an attorney for the town. Because Mr. Bravenek was not a resident either. If you ever went to town attorney, you would need to do the same thing with town attorney. Can I say Bravenek? Because I had the legislative on my brain, sorry.
So, so basically, all I have to do is just go and contact.
Yeah, ask him to, and I'll give you the statute that I need.
You'll give me the, the language for them? Or no, the statute.
I'll give you the statute and I'll send you the email that I need.
Okay.
But, but that's really to button up belt and suspenders and maintain status quo. Because that's, you know, and lots of towns of our, of this size have it.
Okay. Or Neil can just move here. Do I have you in my room, mate? No? Okay. Overtime.
What about the building inspector single bill?
That's the same thing. It would be the, it would literally be the same.
Okay.
Yes. We're going to have a three-person, just like college, it's going to be great. Yeah. What's it called? So, overtime. Yeah, we, we're all kind of aware up here of the financial situation in town. We're trying to get all that in order. The finance department is working very hard on that with our new comptroller and our accounts payable and our clerks and all that. We, right now, it's kind of done, it's kind of done all over the place. I mean, there, I personally don't feel comfortable with the way that it's done right now. It's, it, I mean, yes, there is a system where you have to clock in and clock out. And I definitely need to educate myself on that more. But I, I just feel like there needs to be some sort of written policy somewhere or a stated policy somewhere that, you know, it provides a way for the employees to request it beforehand and explain it after the fact. So, when I'm signing the time sheets or when we're reviewing the financial statements and everything and saying, why is so and so getting this much or this little? You know, we, we have somewhere where we're looking at it and we're saying, oh, this is why. You know, I, it's about the why, you know, and I just want to make sure we're, we as a board are more engrossed, myself as a supervisor and we as a board are more, more engrossed in this process. So, we can keep on top of it, so.
Was any of this interest in the handbook that was drafted?
In our common handbook, there's a, there's something about overtime.
I don't know if there's no one, but we're meeting Tuesday, so maybe we can, I'll take a note on that, we'll talk about it.
Okay.
Well, there's definitely something in the existing handbook.
I'm sure there's probably something in that. There was a lot of other pressing things I was focused on.
I'm just saying that.
Yeah.
But the handbook is from 2001.
But we have a new one drafted.
We have the new one, we just never.
Yeah, we need to, that's a different, yeah.
Yeah, so any, any discussion, any, any overtime? And also, I would throw comp time in this. Like, I don't know what your policy is for comp time. Should be, should be clearly, clearly set forth. This is one, one is comp time, given in lieu of overtime and, and how and what and.
This is going to be more for the office here. Because you already have things drafted with the union, with the union contracts, already there.
Yes.
I had some conversation at the theater about overtime.
I'm less concerned about the union contracts because that's.
That's already said.
Going back two years ago, because I, where I, my career, I dealt with that kind of stuff directly, all the time. And we came to an agreement a couple of years, a year or so ago, probably two years, maybe, but now, is we hired a part-timer over there to eliminate that. And that's not what happened. So, you know, I, well, I know Walkeel's out of town now, but when he gets back, we had talked about putting a list together of what he thinks it's going to be this to me. You know, for example, I sat for seven hours going through numbers with him two, three weeks ago. You know, he didn't leave my side, so it's not like there was anything pressing going on. So, there's, there's somebody in the building and we have a show going on. Like, there's no need, there's no reason in my mind that he's, that he just, you know, I'm in at five o'clock.
Right.
I'm at four o'clock as opposed to, because that number was a big number.
Mm-hmm.
It's a big number.
That's exactly what I'm concerned about.
Also, in an absence of the, in absence of the, you know, the building flooding and balls, hands on deck, we need to save, we need to save our, our stuff. You generally know when there's a big project coming and that overtime will be needed. You know, you know that it's, it's tax season and, you know, they're going to be receiving and they're going to be crazed. You know when those are coming.
And that's my point, because you know what? I mean, we let you know, you know, like, PD, I mean, they, they were, they're overtime a lot of times unforeseen. Like, they have to accept it as certain, certain, you know, maybe a DUI, you know, that we know that it's kind of budgeted that way. Okay, to give them some grants, but we know it's coming into the theater. We have a calendar that says this is what we're doing. So, that's my point, that was my point to it. I don't see, and my question work, can, can the gentleman that's been over, can he operate to say to the answer, yes? So, I just don't.
Okay.
I can't get my head around it. Because when you're spending big money like that, that either it's two things. Either it's abused or we need to put a part-timer on to minimize that number.
Right.
If it's, if it's, we need it, you minimize it instantaneously. And that's not what happens, so.
So, moving forward, I'm going to review the handbook again. But I, I think we need to, we need to take a hard look at the procedure for asking for it and reviewing it afterwards.
Yes, Tom and I can look too, through the, we're meeting for the labor attorney.
Yeah.
Tuesday.
Yeah, talk to them.
You know, in the interim, maybe if you want, I don't know if it's, if we have to, you know, if we have to hold on, something like that, we can do that. Is maybe the respective liaisons, you know, will, will deem what, what areas of the town that we need to have it okay. Like, the water department, if they get something to do in the morning, they got to go.
Yeah, you're not, yeah, same thing with PD and DPD.
Some of the others, I think that could be controlled, which is a process put in place very quickly. Maybe it's an email to the respective liaison or to you. Here's, here's why, just a, no, no building warm piece. I am going to need to spend overtime because of blah, 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 blah. And this for the respective department.
And then have that reflected on the time sheet somewhere. I mean, Tom talked about, I mean, this, it seems a little, you know, from the past and everything. But, you know, he wrote, he used to write on the back of his time sheet to explain literally every single, you know, piece of overtime.
Anything and you come, you get to, you get to somebody and it's like, oh, wait, they called. Did you know about, or was there an email sent, at least then, you know, just as an example? I mean, not that I want to get more emails, because you're sending a lot of emails. I feel like I'm working again. You know, but the, but it's so, oh, yeah, listen, two weeks ago, we had this happen, this one pulled out, so I had, we had no trace. So, yeah, at least you have, there's a, there's a checks and balances to it right now. Right now, there is no checks and balances to any of that.
I think I'll wait for you guys to speak to the attorney.
Yeah, well, we'll talk Tuesday in a week.
I'd like to send out some sort of email, you know, townwide, stating a new policy. I just don't know how we'd go about that, so if you can speak to the attorney.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll.
Yeah.
We're going to Tuesday.
Okay. Moving on. Highlands region expansion. I, I think I've sent this to you guys, I might not have. It's basically, we would be asking, I drafted a resolution already, I think. We'd be entering into a region, it's, it's a geographical region, I think, between New Jersey and New York, where we're basically opening ourselves up for more grant funding and other opportunities for environmental concerns, open space concerns. I, I think it's a great thing. I know Blooming Grove just passed a resolution last year or this year at some point, doing the same thing. They're our neighbors. I, I, there's, there's literally no downside to this. We're just, we're basically opening ourselves up to greater and better opportunities with, with that. So, I, I just, I honestly don't know why I have this on the, on the agenda. Why, why do I have this? Did I have a question for you or something?
Maybe I'll take a look at the resolution. It's pretty, it's, you did.
Yeah.
It's pretty standard in it. A lot of the municipal, a lot of the municipalities coming up, the 87th corridor, essentially the Hudson Valley corridor, are on it. I can send out information to as well as what it is. I don't want to mention Chester. I know, I know several of my municipalities are, were involved. So, I want to get the right name, so I give it to you.
Yeah, I sent it to you on January 27.
So, I don't see, I don't see any issue, I don't see any issue with that.
Okay. I, I think I'm going to have it on the next agenda. Does anybody have any questions about it or anything? No? Is there anything from the public, Michelle?
Not at all.
No? Were you going to say something?
I was just going to say, I think I have a copy.
I'm going to send it to you.
Thank you.
I'm going to send it to everybody right now. All right, moving on. 45B, I've spoken to everybody about this, I believe. This is the, I've gotten all of you guys to consent to it. You guys remember what this is? Basically, it's not allowing a, getting rid of this exemption that basically gives a bunch of tax breaks to certain types of developers or development happening in New York State. And some, a bunch of towns in Orange County and throughout the state have been opting out of it because it, it gives undue tax breaks. And it, I mean, we, we lose out on, on revenue or, or income from it. Let me just see where. So, this is, I think I emailed you about it.
Yep.
Yeah.
So, I.
So, you're still draft, you're still looking at drafting a local law on that?
I'll, I can draft something, I just wanted.
Is this in reference to businesses that are coming into the area and are getting tax breaks through the IDA or anything? Or this is just something different than that?
So, let me just, I'll read you the, here we go. You may be familiar with 45B tax incentive or business investment exemption that allows for property tax exemptions on new, already completed development projects over a 10-year period. In light of the economic and industrial unrest of the mid-1970s, legislators in Albany sought to incentivize new development across the state and launched 45B with the goal of maximizing new business investment while minimizing the impacts on local municipalities. new business investment while minimizing the impacts on local municipalities and school districts. At the time of the legislator's pass, the legislation's passing, both those in favor of the new taxes exemption and those opposed conceded that fiscal impact of tax incentives were historically difficult to assess, yet in desperation, the program was signed into law by then-Governor Mario Cuomo. What the program has wrought in the Orange County communities is somewhat easier to assess now, uh, these nearly five decades since. Uh, in just the last five years alone, over 845B property tax abatements totaling nearly $240 million in lost tax revenue that had, that have been granted across our Senate District. Uh, this is from Senator Scupas. And not one has been required to utilize local labor in its development. I sponsor a bill to address that last part, three, four, S3461, which would establish local labor requirements as part of approval to receive a real tax, a real property tax business investment exemption. But until my bill becomes law, local leaders can take action to block Albany's robbery, this is his opinion, robbery of local tax dollars. To make matters worse, developers need only file a brief application with your taxing jurisdiction's Office of Assessment to claim a multi-year tax break in the thousands of, or tens of thousands. Local leaders have no seat at the negotiating table. Additionally, 45B exemptions can be combined with other incentives. So how can municipalities and school districts make their voice heard? Uh, by encouraging your board to remove that you're taxing a jurisdiction from offering these exemptions and opting out. A number, a number of municipalities and school districts in Orange County have already done so, uh, but many have not, and I'm just making you aware of this, since you are one of those that have not. I think it's, I think it's a no-brainer. And I, I did reach out to all of you, I have in my notes that all of you said that it was good at the time. I know that was back in December and January, but I just wanted to bring it up again. And I, I did have, I did email Liz to do local law on this, but we, she has been extremely busy, so I understand why it hasn't been done. But I, this is also, I, I said this to, I think Liz and Tom, this is kind of, this agenda right here is kind of serving as a to-do list for Liz, unfortunately.
Is this like the pilot, pilot program?
It's, it's, it's similar. Um, let me just pull it up, give me one second.
Because we do have pilot programs, I do not remember.
And I think that's.
The pilot goes through the, the pilot goes through the IDA typically, um, give me one second.
This is done straight, I mean, according to Senator Scoop, is straight with our Assessors' Office.
Does John have a number of maybe?
Abatement, I've never.
I'm not sure, but I, I just don't even want to even have one. I mean, I don't think it's necessary.
Give me one second.
Yeah.
So it doesn't stop anything that the IDA does?
No, it's completely separate.
This is what Lexis is for.
Say we could knock that out of that.
I think.
That's probably where everyone with a big stuff business, I don't even ever remember hearing about this.
Yeah.
Maybe.
So it's a no-brainer to opt out, but it really might not accomplish much.
It might not, but I think it's a good preventative measure, just in case.
485.
Well, even to try to control, like, the local employment, how would you even be able to control?
Well, that's, he's, he's passing a bill on that.
You have to file a certification and then you can get audited. Is it perfect? No, because it, it, um. Shall be exempt from taxation and special valorum taxes, um, to the extent here and after provided, for a period of one year, 50% of the increase in assessed value. So if you have a hundred thousand dollar lot and it turns into a million dollar property, you get 50% of the 900,000. Okay? Um, and for additional nine years, um, it ticks down 5% each year. So it operates kind of sort of like a pilot, except it's based on, a pilot is, they, they set the number, whereas this is based on the actual assessment.
Could this be unresidential?
No, this is only uncommercial.
Because I actually had this in New York City on my personal property, was a 10-year tax abatement program to encourage marginalism, which of course is a bad idea.
Um, and then there's some along complicated, hi, I'm a lawyer, not a, not a math major. I'm just, I mean, the cost of construction has to exceed $10,000, that's not a really high bar.
No.
Um.
Yeah, Bob, you had asked if it's just, uh, business development or all development, and it's just for commercial development.
Yeah. Um, yeah. Shall apply to real estate used primarily for the buying, selling, storing, or development of goods and services, the manufacture, assembly of goods, and processing of raw materials. Shall not apply to property used primarily for furnishing of dwelling space or accommodations to residents or transients, i.e. hotel. Um, no, other than hotels or motels. So you, a hotel might act, hotel motel might actually get the benefit. So I will prep something. Um, again, we're not going to make the tax data state, so this will be in my March slash April pile.
That's fine.
Um.
We're all good on that, though?
Yeah.
Okay.
Out, target March. Okay.
Uh, noise ordinance. Liz, do you need to be somewhere?
No, I was coming from somewhere.
Okay, good. We're almost done anyway. Yeah, we're only two things away. Uh, I was working on it. Um, noise ordinance, so a couple of things, and this is something, you know, we, we definitely need to spell out in the, in the code what weekends and weekdays are, we should just do it by days, like, you know, that's, that's an easy fix right there. Um, I, I know there's debate about this, but I do want to open it up to another, you know, public hearing and, um, uh, you know, a debate between us and an actual town board meeting is the commercial exemption. I think there could be parameters put around it, um, where it could be spelled out a little bit more. I do not think they should just be outright exempt, um, just because I think the residents need to come first always. And so I would like that in the, uh, in, in a new local law that will be debated and, you know, spoken about at public hearings. I, I'm not, obviously just can't do this outright, because I know there is debate on this board itself. Um, and then what else? I know we want the decibel.
The decimals are high.
Decibels, it's at 85. I think the normal is 65. I think that's like the, there's like some sort of analogy where, um, but it was like a football game or something, I, I don't know. But 65 is the normal comparatively to other towns in, in the area and just.
Is that also along with our comprehensive plan?
That, that is a lot, yeah, that's, that's the thing that's in, right now, we have 85 in the comprehensive plan that we have right now, it's 65. So we're going against our comprehensive plan right now. So these are a couple of things that I know, I, I wish, we all wish Larry was here, because I know he would, he would have a lot to say about this, but those are the top three things off of my mind that I can think of that needs to definitely be looked at.
My question, Liz, on the comment program, probably more question, is if we, we go start to change those exemptions, we load the local law, we put it in place, and now we're going to exempt commercial district, so maybe are we opening ourselves up to litigation?
Well, any, look, anything you do, anybody can sue you at any time for anything, whether it has, whether it has any merit. Um, again, it depends on, on what you do. A, a business does not necessarily have the right to be as loud as they want, you know, and there, there's reasons. The biggest issue with, and, and I see your chief's here, um, the biggest issue with noise ordinances is noise ordinances are one of those games of whack-a-mole. You get the complaint, they go out, quiet down, they leave, they turn the music back up or whatever. Um, so the noise ordinances, um, and also you just, if you're going to have a decibel, make sure your police department has a decibel reader, um, because I got to be able to, uh, an officer saying, you know, testifying in court, hey, it was loud, doesn't, doesn't win the day. Um, so noise ordinances are one of those, it's my whack-a-mole.
Well, I think the two issues that we had back when this was being debated was, we had, uh, the Tets family with their, uh, quarry operation, which is turned over to another person, and we also had, uh, representatives from the gun club.
Yeah, the gun club is still exempt.
Yeah, I guess that, that's.
Those were the two that were really stood out.
Back to my old, I, I listen, I think the gun club should be, but I, if we're back to now, if we're going to, we're going to the gun club, but we're going to say, commercial, commercial businesses shouldn't be, we've already said it's a contest to be, I mean, we'll debate it publicly, to me, we're opening ourselves up to.
And it depends on, it, it, it depends on how, I, I get it, and I kind of have an idea of which commercial businesses we're, we're talking about. Um, it, it depends on what level of regulation. There, there are de minimis things you can do. You can't have the speakers facing, you know, you can't have the speakers facing the resident, or things like that, where they can still have their, they can still do what they had been doing.
That's what I'm saying.
And then, and then.
I think there can be parameters around it where.
You're also late, um, you're 11 o'clock, which is later than most than, so depending on, depending on what kind of, um, and I think one of the reasons this came up was a perform, a potential, uh, performance at the Performing Arts Center. Just because you have your noise ordinance, you can certainly put more strict provisions for a performer at the Performing Arts Center in the contract.
Right.
You can't deviate, you can't go louder than your noise ordinance, but you can go more restrictive.
I'm just, my concern is just, we're going to open ourselves up to.
Okay, we can certainly look at that.
We've done something, and, and the other, my other comment, and we, I'm the one that's, you know, strongly against changing it, you know, no, no secret, I mean, I have debated this publicly a few times, is you're still, we can change what we want to change, and when, you know, maybe it's, we have a business that, you know, that is, is part of what's, we're bringing some of this up, but I know they've done stuff to mitigate, which I know they're able to prove. But the other piece is, you don't fix, by changing the number, you don't fix the behavior. If you're still going to do, you're still going to play your music loud, or you're still going to.
Well, that's, that's where the decibel reader comes in and enforcement.
You're not going to fix it, and I know, because I've talked with Dan about it, you know, we had to let the law two years ago, two years ago, we had 71 complaints, and then last year we had 50. So obviously, the law is being effective, so I just don't think.
And I, I will say, because I do code enforcement in other municipalities, my noise ordinances in COVID went sky high, you know, my noise complaints went sky high because people were at home and they had heard the noise throughout the day, you know, noise that they would normally, you know, they were getting noise complaints at noon, and it was because they were home. So, um, we, we can certainly take a look and recommendations, and I can certainly, um, provide you samples of what other municipalities do. It is, it is a hard thing to enforce, and if you are going to have a decibel, um, standard, whoever's responding has to have a functioning decibel reader and goes into all the same proofs.
I don't think we have now, do we?
So that's, you know, if we're going to insert that standard, I don't know what, I, I couldn't tell you, is that 80 decibels or is that 60? I'm not, you know, I can tell you it's loud.
I think we just can, I, this is a debate for later, but I think everything needs to conform to 65.
Well, I, I agree we should be conform, but I'm going to, we disagree on the number, because we've had it, I had decibel meter up here, and we, we're talking right now, and it's, it would be at 65, because I had already done this at a meeting. So I just don't think, if we're going to change the number, we got to comply with the compromise plan, for sure. But what the number is, you know, 65, I think, is New York City, if I, if I remember when we got drafted, but the whole need for that. And, you know, so it was based off of that, um, there's a lot of loopholes in it, we need to, we need to shore up loopholes on which, a hundred percent. I just don't know what we're going to gain out of this at the end of the day.
And the number I was looking at originally with the noise ordinance was a number at which point it does damage to somebody's ears. That's where the 85 came from.
Yeah, and that's, and that's if you're having, I know the example was, I wish Larry was here, because Larry, Larry's, you know, very much a tool in it. Um, but you'd have to, like a lawnmower running, you'd have to be standing there for days for that to, to take effect. It's not like it's up, it's.
Well, it's the long, it's the long-term effects of that sound.
I will tell you, I've had surf pro in my office for the past four days with the fans going. They turned off, I was like, oh my God, this sound, because the fans were going for four days. You, first you don't think it's that loud.
I do, it's, I mean, you do, I, I can remember just when we had the parade for the graduation, listening to all those sirens, wow, this for three days, my ears run, so.
Oh, yeah.
I get, I get it, the noise, but I, and I'm going to, you know, listen, I'm a proponent of the noise ordinance, I just don't, I guess, you know, again, you know, we're debating when it comes to five, but I just don't see the, you know, you don't fix, you know, if you have bad neighbors that are not going to pay attention, the number that's not going to fix the bad neighbors.
No, I think it's, it's, it's more of a reference to bring in compliance with what was designed before through our comprehensive plan. I think that's more of the idea, and, you know, the enforcement's still, is still the tough part, no matter how, whether you have a meter or not, still going to be a tough, tough sell.
I still think, you know, while we start changing, if then you start changing commercial district, it's not that we've already, we've already exempted, and now we're going to want to exempt them, I think, I think we're opening ourselves up to.
Let's, let's.
We'll debate it.
Let's, um.
We'll debate it.
Okay.
All right. Uh, ward system, why did I have this here?
That's a reminder, because, um, the question was brought up whether the.
Yeah.
And I held off researching it because you were going to.
I, I've, the, the damn.
I can, I can research it.
Who's, who's, who, who is it?
Who, who?
The, the people up in the state.
Nikon.
Association of Towns.
Sorry, I'm in Village Road.
I've reached out to her like 13 times. I got her, ahold of her once, and she said she's going to get back to me, and I.
You'll see her.
Oh yeah, I will.
Yeah.
Well, no, I, I want it done before then, but, you know, I'm, I'm going to call her again.
We were hoping that they would have a, a quickie answer, I can, I'm happy to, I'll take a look.
You go ahead.
I have one comment. A beer, so I need a vacuum cleaner at one meter, it's 70 decibels. So, uh, as someone who has litigated noise complaints, make sure your officers have decibel readers.
Yes. We'll have to make an investment into that, for sure.
I've given Walter mine at the theater.
Okay.
So, we were told with the hair thing, and I don't know if that's even a.
Okay.
What were you going to say?
No, I was going to ask, so what is the question outstanding with the, with regard to the ward?
The, the, the outstanding question is whether or not, um.
The legislative referendum is still, is stale.
Is, is valid. The, the referendum that was done in 2018, because it's so, it's been, it's so long now, we're.
Is it stale? So that, that I have to look into.
Because we, we could, we could, we could implement the ward system, but then there might be some sort of legal challenge at a very inconvenient time during a election in which we're using the wards, and they'll say, hey, this is six plus years ago now, or eight plus years ago now that you had this referendum and you didn't implement it this year, I'm challenging it. And then that throws the whole thing into a tailspin. Whereas right now, if we decide, hey, like, it's been too long, there's nothing we can do about it other than getting another one on the ballot. So we can have a fresh vote on it where we have more of a standing. Now, I'm not sure if it's stale or not, we're not sure, that's why we're trying to get, we're trying to get research. If it's not stale, then I'm going to move forward with it full throttle. If it is stale, or if there's a question, or if there's a reasonable doubt that it's stale and it could cause enough standing to get us into a lawsuit, I ran against lawsuits, stale and it could cause enough standing to get us into a lawsuit, I ran against lawsuits, I'm not going to take that chance, we're going to go and do another referendum and get it on the ballot, so the people can give us the authority to do this again.
And I'm looking into if that becomes the case, making it a two-parter, where, do you want wards? And then, remember, I told you that the ward system reverts to two years?
Yeah, we need a.
Can we, if we implement a ward system, do you want four years with the, and then I'm hoping, and I have to do the, I have to do the research, can we accomplish it instead of two-part, two successive referendums, one on the same, essentially two questions on the same ballot, and have our, have our answer? Um, that I have to, that's a little bit of a novel thing. Um, so I have to look into that more, we have a little bit of time to do that. Um, so, but that's.
I didn't even think about it even being stale.
It's a problem, unfortunately. I mean, it should have been done a long time ago, but it's, didn't happen.
So I will, um, I'll look into that.
Yeah. I'm going to continue to follow with them, if you can, I mean, that's something.
That's going to be one of my, that's going to be my, one of my list.
Yeah, that's, not as pressing.
Well, at least you don't have time to get it on the ballot.
I just want to let everybody know, I'm away the last week of May, so.
Okay.
Have a good time.
Okay. And that's, that's it. Is there anything from anybody else here that I wanted to bring up while we're all here? No?
Um, I have been, um, trying to schedule a meeting with John Bach to go over code enforcement.
Yes. You're not having.
Well, he has walking pneumonia. Um, so we were scheduled, he, we were supposed to meet this yesterday, he rescheduled for today, and he said, Liz, it's not going to, he's, so I'm going to give him a day or two. Um, and, um, I think, report back to the board.
Well, we're calling back things, and I, and I should have brought it up, it just popped in my head. Um, and we're looking at code enforcement, what we're looking at, are we going to get gradually looking at properties, types of moved lawns, cars with no registration, broken appliances, out of them.
I think a lot of that's in there already.
When I say code, code enforcement, when I refer to code enforcement, I'm talking broad strokes, and I'm talking pretty much generally any violation under your town code. That could be, um, constructing something without a permit, that could be property maintenance issues, that could be a wide, a wide array. Code enforcement is ultimately a, a business decision. Um, one of the things you have to balance is code enforcement can, tends to cost money and resources, and you have to walk that balance of, of where that, where that falls. And that's a hard, that's a hard question, because, you know, sometimes you really need to go guns blazing, other times, and, and folks, you know, some municipalities have, have, you know, Village of Monroe has three people in their building, you know, three inspectors.
Mm-hmm.
Right? As opposed to us that has, has one. So you have to decide, um, how far you take it, some of there's discretion, um, you'll obviously know the, the biggies, you're going to go after the biggies, and, um, you just have to be prepared that when you're putting those resources into code enforcement, um, that we are not likely to, you just have to assume that whoever is doing the prosecuting is not going to get that cost back in fines. You have to assume that we're going to spend the money, and.
Even the fines wouldn't come back to us.
They would, but it's not going to cover your costs.
Right.
And, and if you expect it to cover your, if you, don't expect it to cover your costs you're going in with a reasonable presumption. If you expect it to cover your costs, then you're in the wrong, you know, it's, my goal when I do code enforcement is always to, the first is compliance, the second is the money, because us having a pile of money doesn't, you know, having them pay a fine doesn't get it fixed.
Compliance is the big thing, and being uniform, treating everybody the same is the two big tickets.
So that's, that's the.
One question.
That's the hard part. Um, and it's, it is absolutely a balancing act. I've had a lot, why are we going, you know, why aren't we going after this, after this, after this? I'm happy to, but that's going to be six more hours of attorney time, you know, more hours of your building inspector, so you just have to balance that.
Got a question, I think, from Michelle.
Yes. Donna asks, that gave back to the noise ordinance, we need to change because there's a business exemption that should be removed. Our home is too noisy when there is outside band playing, we can't enjoy our home.
We'll debate it.
I didn't say anything.
I'm not giving time.
I didn't have to say anything. Um, all right, anything else?